Oh, okay. Well, we have a quorum, so want to get started? So I'll do roll call and welcome everybody here. We have trustee Newbold, Kendall, Lorenzen, Holland, Beers, and Smith present. We're potentially expecting somewhere between one and three more trustees who are running late, but we'll go ahead and get started since this is an atypical night for us to be meeting on. So this is the time for public comment on non-agenda items. See, no public comment on non-agenda items. Then we'll move on to new business, which is A1, which is to adopt the 2018-2019 elementary budget, and then it will be followed with adopting the 2018-2019 secondary budget. So we'll turn it over to you, Pat.
All right. Thank you. And I'll flip the slides for MCAT, but you'll have all of this information in your packet. I was going to look first at this slide, which is on page four of the packet. This is the recommended adoption motion. It identifies the final budgets for our nine budgeted funds along with the amount to be raised with levies. And so this is essentially a summary of what the board's compelled to do, which is adopt the final budgets and set the levies. The -- I might bounce around a little bit, but there's a little more detail backing that information up. And I'll put it up on the slide there. That's on page seven. And I like this. This slide provides a little more information in terms of what the levy amount has done in terms of increase and decrease, what it means in terms of mills, and then tax impact. So you'll see there on page seven that the general fund experienced an increase in budgets, but a decrease in levies. And this is part of what initially was -- came out of House Bill 647, where the legislature eliminated block grants in the general fund with the intent of picking additional state funding of base mills with guaranteed tax base funds. So we're seeing the GTB increase. The effect of that is the base levy, the local levy to fund the base decreases, and so the net effect there is that decrease, both in mills and then tax impact. Not surprising, the debt service fund levy increased as we're serving more of that bonded indebtedness, so that's anticipated. We have the building reserve increase for that permissive levy up to $310,000 in the elementary. And then the transportation increase was reflective of the B each contract that we negotiated and the four-and-a-half percent increase. So that's a summary. The tax impact on the elementary on a $200,000 home would be $9.50 annually, and a mill increase of 3.5. Any questions on those first two slides? Again, I bounce around a little bit, but the -- I wanted to go back to the slide here, which is the elementary -- how do I say elementary? The comparison of revenue on the elementary side. And -- thank you. So page 11 has both elementary and high school. And the slide up above there is elementary side. And this is a recap of what I talked about in the general fund. It shows the prior year, 2018, revenue sources for the general fund. It shows our 19 budgeted revenue sources, the comparison, the differences. And there at the bottom of that spreadsheet or that slide is the number of mills levied and the A and B impact on the general fund along with the tax value. You'll see the slight decrease in taxable value there at the bottom, about $35,000, $37,000. And then the decrease in the mills that are levied that we just talked about. Up above, about the beginning on the fifth line, it says base levy. That's the local taxpayer levy to fund the base that went down, $627,000. And the over-base levy, that's the levy we passed that went up, $305,000. So those two essentially offset each other and resulted in a bit of a savings on the general fund side.
Question?
Yeah?
Can you briefly tell us the difference between guaranteed tax base and direct state aid?
Yes. So both are funding sources in support of the state share of the budget. And so the state shares in the budget by virtue of their contribution of those five, those bottom five items. So those are the additional funding sources from the state. The direct state aid is 44.7% of the per A and B entitlement and the basic entitlement, and that's a commitment.
Regardless of how much money you have.
Exactly. That's right. So that's -- and then the guaranteed tax base is a subsidy of the base mills. So the remainder that I didn't talk about represents the GTB budget area, is what they call it. And within the GTB budget area, if your district doesn't receive guaranteed tax base aid, then all of that is funded by base mills. We receive GTB, so it directly reduces what otherwise would be funded by -- through base mills. And the intent of GTB is it's a subsidy for base mills intended to equalize tax valuations across the state. And so there's a calculation of the GTB ratio statewide and then a calculation of your district GTB ratio. Same look. It's a look at your taxable valuation divided by the GTB budget area. That gives you a ratio. If your ratio's less than the statewide GTB ratio, then you qualify for this subsidy. The calculation of the subsidy is essentially the reverse. You would take then the ratio that's statewide, and then you'd multiply it by the portion that's not funded locally. It'll give you the amount that essentially you should be funded as a district to equalize. And then that difference from your local amount represents the portion of mills that's funded with every base mill. It's a ratio that's calculated. So in the elementary, it amounts to about $184,000 per base mill levied, and that's where we get to this 7.6 million. The ratio, the statewide ratio, you look at that state valuation and then multiply it this year by 216%, and then next year it'll be multiplied by 223%. So that ratio is going up, which means that more districts will qualify, and more districts like ours will probably see additional bumps through 2021 as that continues to grow. So if the legislature doesn't change what they put in place in 2017, then we'll continue to see some climb in the GTB. And part of the intent here is they eliminated the natural resource development payment, which was supposed to offset local taxpayer obligations to fund the base. The GTB funding piece, though, and this is the idea, is that it's more reflective of relative valuations by districts. And so, in effect, lower-valued districts would receive greater aid than districts with higher values. So I believe Whitefish doesn't qualify for GTB, and it's based upon their tax valuation relative to their -- to that base budget area, the GTB budget area.
Pat?
Yeah?
And that's all? That's the --
Your microphone?
The taxable value at the bottom of the slide there.
That's right.
That's our local -- that's what you were referring to for our --
Yeah. So you would take that taxable value and divide it by our GTB budget area. And our GTB budget area, I could calculate.
That's okay.
I'd take a minute. But it's essentially taking our base budget, subtracting out those five funding components at the bottom, quality educator at risk, Indian Ed, American Indian Achievement Gap, and then subtracting out direct state aid and a portion of special ed allowable costs. So maybe not as simple. But that gives you the base budget area, and then it helps calculate the ratio.
Right. So I guess my question was going to be, on that taxable value -- oh, yes. Sorry. On the taxable value, it looks like it's going down for the community? And that's -- is that a -- what's that a reflection of? I kind of expect that to go up.
Well, it -- with the change in the valuation that happened here a few years ago, they only reassess every third year or after every two years. And so unless there's new construction to add to the mix, which we've seen, you're not going to increase your tax values. The tax -- or the construction that I think we're seeing is happening in TIF districts, so we may not see it on our tax rolls.
That's my --
Because that value might be happening outside our tax valuation.
And those TIF districts will eventually get back on the rolls because they do sunset.
That's the idea. And when they do come back on the rolls, they should be more valuable because they should contain more taxpaying entities. That's the idea.
Right.
And the other element was the mountain water phase-in of that property. And I think in our financial audit there, about number four and number five is a taxpayer. So that will have an impact on our -- not a huge one because we're spread around pretty well. So mountain water's purchased by the city, then that'll fall off the tax rolls.
Because they don't pay taxes.
Right. But the city is transitioning that, so they'll pay for a while, but that will eventually go along.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. I guess the next slide I jump to is on page 10. And this is our general fund projections, really very much in line with what we saw last week, two weeks ago when we -- the 14th, when we brought this to the board. With a couple of small changes, I'll note, the final maximum budget in the high school went down slightly. This reflected some adjustment in A and B between us and OPI. So that was a small adjustment of about $11,000. Then our additional classroom FTE, we're estimating five, but we're at 5.25, so it reflected a slight bump there. And then down at the bottom to balance, we have utilizing additional Medicaid funds and then a slight change in the inter-local agreement between the elementary and the high school. And the result is a zero deficit or a positive budget balance for both districts. The very bottom line is that data for achievement. That's the funding source included in the calculation of our budgets but not funded by the state. And so just reflecting it there, our intent would be to cover it through the course of the year in budget savings because it's not budgeted here as a cost item. Let's see. The more informational item, the graphs that you'll see on page eight and nine. Let's see. I don't know if they need it up there or not. All right. So on page eight, you'll see the elementary mill levies, just showing that change over time. This is excluding the debt service fund. Part of that increase, as we know, was the elimination of the block grants. Part of the increases are increases in budgets in the general -- in the elementary general fund tied to A and B and that relationship between state funding and local funding. The -- page nine has the elementary debt service mill levies. And I think really the only thing to point out there is just how low it has been for so long. So we're essentially debt-free since 2009 and then passed our bonds in 2015 and issued bonds in '16 and '17. So those bumps are voted and not surprising. You know, those are the items I had to go over. And I know you've all seen those, most of the detailed information before, but happy to go into it in further detail.
I just was trying to figure out if I had a question first.
Okay.
I think it's related to elementary, although it's high school, too. Under -- on page 10, under the reduction savings and offsets, down toward the bottom is moved tech costs to tech fund, and it's $40,000, which looks like it's offset by position savings on the elementary side. Are they completely unrelated or related or --
Completely unrelated, but happen to be similar amounts in that the both -- we recognize some position savings in both districts, really tied to an overestimate of the cost of lane movement, and then also just a reasonable amount of savings associated with position movement during the year. So felt like that was a reasonable amount to include in the budget. The tech costs movement to the tech fund is -- these are general fund expenditures that can appropriately be picked up in the tech fund. And hopefully that'll -- that does help the general fund balance. And this works both ways. I mean, it certainly happens where the general fund has picked up tech fund costs and vice versa.
Any other questions? Seeing -- excuse me, seeing none. Then is there a motion from any elementary trustee to approve adoption of the 2018-2019 elementary budgeted funds and the amounts to be raised by tax levies, which are presented on the attached motion and resolution? Moved by trustee Lorenzen, seconded by trustee McDonald. Is there any board discussion? I'll just say thanks to Pat and his office staff for, once again, trying to explain the unexplainable to me. And I've been looking at this for quite a while now, but I really appreciate all the work and detail you go through. Anything else? Any public comment? Seeing none, then all elementary trustees in favor of the motion to approve the adoption of the 2018-2019 elementary budgeted funds and the amounts to be raised by tax levies, please indicate by raising your hand. And that's all unanimous as to all elementary trustees present. Then we move on to item number two, which is to adopt the secondary budget. So if you want to point out if there's any distinctions or differences here?
Sure. You bet. So the -- maybe I'll just jump to this slide that's up, and that's on page 15. It has the most detail about the budgeted funds on the high school side. Similar to the elementary side, we've seen a restoration of state funding in the form of the guaranteed tax base funds. So even though we passed the over-base levy in the elementary of about 170 -- or the high school of about $170,000, we're still seeing a decrease in total levies of almost half a million dollars. That represents 2.59 mills and a reduction of $7 in annual taxes on a $200,000 home. The high school side also, in the building reserve, saw a $450,000 levy come off the tables, off the table. So that pretty much entirely offset the increase in the debt service to service our bonds, both in terms of levy and in terms of mills. And so at the end of the day, looking at all these budgeted funds, we're looking at a decrease in levy of about $325,000 and about 2.04 mills. And in the high school, a reduction in taxes of about $5.51. So it's a quite a bit different picture than last year and a real positive picture from a taxpaying standpoint. The couple slides. This is on page 12. Like the elementary, here's our summary of final budgets and their levy amounts. Those numbers were on that details sheet I just showed, but this is the summary that's part of the motion and budget adoption motion. The projections we looked at for the general fund on elementary and high school just a bit ago. Sorry, I'm trying to -- so that's on page 10. And the change in A and B was the high school, and you can see we're balanced there. Then the graphs. On page eight, the high school mill levies excluding -- oh, thank you. Sorry. Hello, elementary. Need binoculars. Okay. So the page eight has the high school mill levies excluding the debt service. And we are, over this 14-year span, about as low as we've been during that period of time. There's only about three other years where we're at this level of mills, 68.8 mills. And you can see over that period of time that we're very flat. It's very somewhat predictable. And this is of all of our budgeted funds other than debt service. And then debt service, a lot like the elementary, not at the zero point. We had a couple of refunded bonds that we are still paying off, but very low mills until we passed our bonds in 2015 and then raised levies to support those bond obligations that were approved. So very much expected that we would have that bump in mills on the debt service side. And the picture of mills in the high school looks very good. Then finally, on page 11, is the graph with the revenue pictures and -- this thing is a bugger. So page 11, we looked at this on the elementary side. Like the elementary, we're seeing the base levy go down, so that's beneficial to our local taxpayer. It's being picked up to a greater extent through the GTB funding from the state. And so between those two, we have, in the elementary anyway, the support for a reduction in local -- in overall levy. So you'll see the over-base levy of $169,000. That was what was passed by the voters. And on the base side, a reduction in local support of $653,000. So to the good $400,000, $400-plus thousand. And there at the bottom, much like the elementary, you'll see the total mills. We went from 52.6 mills levied last year to 50.05 this year, and a drop in A and B, slight drop, 10, not too bad. Tax valuation went up slightly in the high school, $203.8 million to $204.7 million, just under a million dollars. Those are the slides I have.
Trustee Kendall? Trustee Lorenzen?
There was an article in the paper a few days ago talking about how the school districts that MCPs is going to get $1 million because of a decision that the city made. Can you explain that and how that fits into this budget?
Yeah, definitely. Yeah. Yeah. So the -- at this point, it's not factored at all into this budget because it's not been decided on by the city council. So we're not relying upon that in any way. And what we'll do is we'll wait to see what that looks like in terms of what we've been reading about and hearing about. There is a statute that addresses remittance from tax increment districts and what school districts can do with those remittances. And generally, they're available to reduce property taxes and/or to go into operational reserves. And so the -- what we'll look at is how we can best accomplish that goal or that objective that's set forth in the statute. I think, as you all know, we've -- the legislature and the special session sent a bill two, and then in Senate Bill 261, they've pulled back funding, transportation funding for in block grants. There's some possibility to look at this funding source to offset some of those losses in funding, all of which, you know, can have an impact upon property taxes. So I guess that's what I believe to be our objective would be, to try and benefit property taxpayers and also to -- and maybe not also, but and -- and support the reserves and offsetting some of these revenue losses. So we'll see what happens. I believe the city votes on their budget on the 27th, so a week from tonight.
So my question is about transportation budgets. The elementary, we have, you know, pretty much neighborhood schools, and our high school is so far-flung. And yet our elementary budget for transportation is almost twice the high school. Why is that?
We have that many more routes in the elementary budget. The high school routes has a -- or high school reimbursement, and the transportation fund has a three-mile walk radius, and the elementary's a one-mile walk radius. If we looked closely at routes, probably in the high school, what we'd see is a number of fewer bus routes, but longer routes. So we're busing kids from further away than in the elementary. And what we'd see in the elementary are more routes of shorter distance. But still, the routes are scheduled and arranged to meet drop-off and dismissal times, you know, to minimize the number of routes. But we're gonna -- we do have more in the elementary.
I might also add, the A and B in the elementary district is about 2,000 students larger than the high school district, too, which would impact that.
Any other questions for Marc or Pat? Trustee Smith? Oh, okay. So without -- with no other questions, then is there a motion to approve the adoption of all 2018-2019 high school budgeted funds and the amounts to be raised by tax levies as presented in the attached motion and resolution? Moved by trustee Wake, seconded by trustee McDonald. Any board discussion or comments? Trustee Smith?
I'll just echo what you said before, Marcia, about thanking Pat and his crew for putting this all together. It's really nice to see it all together. I just wanted to reiterate a few times that -- or a few things that I'm sure have been said in many meetings before, especially regarding our debt service. And I know that hindsight's 2020, and it would have been great to have done a lot of these deferred maintenances that our bond issue finally is addressing. But earlier on in the past -- but in the recent history, we can see what's happened in Helena and other places, that we did pick a pretty good time to move that through. And I'd like to thank everybody in the district that worked toward that, all the teachers that had to put up, all the kids that had to put up with this construction in their schools, and it's ongoing, I know. But also with all the construction, all the local workers that have worked so hard to get that done. I think that has probably saved us quite a bit of money in the long run as we see these budgets move forward and continue to pay the debt service on those. That, and I -- and kind of side by side with that, I note, too, that That, and I, and kind of side by side with that, I note too that, Pat, you brought up the building reserves that have sunset and allowed us to save somebody for the taxpayer. And I know that it's been a conscious decision to take the bond funds and address what a lot of those building reserves have addressed, but I would put out there that we continue to keep this in the forefront so that we don't put ourselves in a situation or put some board, I probably won't be on that board ten or twenty or thirty years from now, in a situation where they have to do all the maintenance at once. So I would hope that we would continue to keep that in forefront in our minds as we look forward and perform maintenance as it is intended to be done ongoing as opposed to after the fact. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other comment? Trustee Kendall, did you have a head up? Seeing no other board comments? Is there any public comment?
First of all, I want to reiterate what's been said already. The amount of work that's gone in to closing out last year's budgets, determining what can be reallocated, carried over, and how those numbers impact the nine budgeted funds in the elementary district and the nine budgeted funds in the secondary district, is an incredible amount of work. And again, we're under strict timelines, and I appreciate the work that Pat has done with the staff in order to make sure that happens and want to also mention Dan Parrish and the work that he's done to help pull all these budgets together. It is truly incredible work. And as you know, each year, we go through an audit, and every year, we come out with a very clean audit, since because of the amount of effort that they've done to position us to be where we are tonight. So certainly my appreciation to them. And just again, to reiterate what should be evident here, most of our stakeholders live in the combined K-12 district. And the total impact, given adoption of these two budgets, would be an increase of three dollars ninety-eight cents on a two hundred thousand dollar assessed property. If you live in one of the K-eight feeder districts that are partners with us in our high school district, you'll actually see a five dollar fifty-one cent decrease in the tax assessment on a two hundred thousand dollar property. So again, I think our intent to be good stewards of the resources we're provided is evident tonight, and I appreciate everybody's work to make that happen.
Any other comments? Seeing none, we have a seconded motion, so all trustees in favor of approving the adoption of 2018-2019 high school budgeted funds and the amounts to be raised by tax levies as presented on the attached motion and resolution found in our packet, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. Then there's one additional item. I don't know if it's Hatton or Mark, or Pat? Okay. Since Rachel's not here. Anyway, it's to award a bid for the smart interactive flat panels.
All right, thank you. So these are items that the actual permission to bid this happened on the night we opened the bids or the day we opened the bids, which was last week, the fourteenth board meeting. And I think those displays were in this room at that time, so we could look at them. But we scored, as a committee, reviewed two submittals and are recommending the selection of TEST to be the vendor that would provide and install these interactive flat panels.
Any questions for Pat? Trustee Lorenzen?
We don't approve everything, so why are we getting this one? Is it the dollar amount?
Dollar amount, yeah.
I have just one quick question that I might have asked last week too, in connection with the different bid, but is that, generally speaking, the two hundred and forty thousand four hundred and thirty-five in the ballpark of where you anticipated that this, these bids would come out since there were only two bidders?
Well, what we had, what the bidding documents requested was for sure forty-six, forty-six or forty-nine, up to sixty-five. And so I'm showing the up to sixty-five, but it's actually was better. It was a very good bid and very good proposal relative to the other competitor. And we definitely appreciate multiple bidders for competition purposes, but this was certainly a better price bid.
Any other questions? Seeing none, then is there a motion to authorize the selection of T E S T Incorporated as the vendor that will provide and install up to the sixty-five smart interactive flat panels, subject to a successful negotiation of a contract? Moved by trustee Kendall, seconded by trustee Smith. Any board discussion? Seeing none, any public comment? Seeing none, then all trustees in favor of the motion to authorize the selection of TEST, please indicate by raising your hand. And that's unanimous as to all trustees present. Thanks. And now we move on to item number four, public comment on non-agenda items, which we provide for at the beginning of, end of every meeting. Seeing no one stepping to the podium, then we are adjourned. And thank you all for making the time to be here. It's a short, very important day.